Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and this is Thursday, July 15th of 2021. Let's start the meeting off first with the Pledge of Allegiance. And please stand, you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. We've got almost a full house here between, we're here in the town office building, and got a couple people that are on Zoom. And did you just let Dana in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Dana. Hi.
Hi.
So, that setup bill, so whoever's talking is going to be big?
Yes.
Okay, or whoever's having dinner is going to be big?
That's pretty technically you talking doesn't put you up there.
Okay, okay. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of tonight's agenda. Hopefully, most of you have seen it, if not all of you.
Yep. Both to approve. Is Dana?
I'll second it.
Dana and Howard, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Doesn't look like there's any public here to comment. So we'll move along to Andy, if you're ready. You're the first, you're first up on the agenda to follow up on the conversation you started last time.
Right.
God bless you.
Well, I did not actually write anything out. I just got, we just got home last night. So that's my excuse. At any rate, what I, what I would think would be appropriate would be a statement that would just say that we would like to ask the Select Board that we would like to review the zoning document that we created back in 20. Do you have it? Mary Beth?
Um, let's see, when it was created, I don't know.
Okay, and, and say that, and ask their permission to go through it, review it, update it, and submit it to them for, for consideration and hopefully approval.
And we're still thinking this was about eight years ago?
At least, I think.
While ago.
It was a while.
So the early 2000s, just to give them a ballpark.
I, I think, I think I've been on the board six years, and it was before that.
It was, it was when I was on the Select Board. And I think I ran across in my file of archives from back then, the copy that we worked with from the Select Board's standpoint. And there was, the Select Board felt that that, excuse me, at that time, that there was too much detail in there. Um, I'll have, I would have to go over the thing to try to jog my mind as to what specifically those items were, but there was numerous, numerous things that the Select Board cut out. And we took our time about that because we wanted to get it right. And we were being pressured by some in town to get it down to a 10-page document that we could get over the Act 250 hurdle with. Um, we took too much time because we, we ran out of time. In other words, there was a deadline that the Select Board had to get the thing back to the Planning Commission. And we went over that limit. So it never did get back to the Planning Commission while I was sitting on there. And that was, I would guess about 2010 or 12, somewhere in there.
And that goes along with the way I remember it. The Select Board had the document and whatever reviewed it, and it just, it just died essentially. It was never voted on, yea or nay.
We, um, we, nobody ever told us what the deadline was. We just, in fact, I guess, and from my point of view, I didn't even realize there was a deadline.
I think this, yeah, a period of time where you have to take action.
Yeah.
Right.
But being Select Board and in that tunnel that we were in, I expect probably to some degree they are still today, you know, we just, we just were dealing with the stuff that was in front of us. And
Okay.
If, you, maybe you could call it a dereliction of duty or, or not. I guess you could make an argument either way, but our approach was to try to go through the thing and get to, get it to a point where it'd be acceptable to the town. Well, we ran out of time and it got to, I believe Bill Matson was the chairman at that time.
Yeah, he was.
He was a little irritated that we didn't respond quicker. And you know, that's his prerogative, I guess. We, I still, from where I was sitting on, I would, if I had it to do over again today, I'd probably do the same thing because, like I say, the, the climate for zoning in Rutland Town is not a burn burner.
Yeah.
I don't think it is today.
Norm?
Yeah, I have a couple, two or three comments. First, I should indicate that my first clerkship, summer clerkship in law school was, was with a very, very successful zoning attorney. So I got a taste of it there. And I'm kind of, kind of still pro zoning. I do remember at one meeting that since I've been on the commission, zoning came up somehow. And I remember Alan Beederman offering a comment that made a lot of sense to me in, on several different levels. And he said, you know, writing the zoning ordinance for a town that's already built out, as we, Rutland Town, to a great extent is, is a very difficult thing to do. And I believe he said he wasn't in favor of it. Alan guided us a lot. And something to keep in mind. I have a question about the procedure of adopting the zoning ordinance. If the Select Board had approved it and sent it back to the Planning Commission in time, what's the procedure after that? Does the Select Board vote on it, or does it go to the, on the town ballot for town meeting day or otherwise?
Back at that time, if the Select Board made, what they, what was the term was significant changes in the proposed document from the Planning Commission, it had to go back to the Planning Commission and start all over as far as, as, as the way I remember it. Now, there's been a lot of time to lap since then, so I expect there may be some changes in some of that.
Yeah, yeah. In some ways, it works a lot like the town plan. There's a lot of the same rules, if you will. But I'm not, I cannot remember right offhand. I don't deal with zoning that often. Can't remember if it needs a town vote as well as the process through the Planning Commission and the Select Board, and, and maybe back to the Planning Commission if there are changes and so forth.
So the, the changes that, that the Select Board made were, turned out to be milked because of the, the lapse to time, went past the deadline.
Right.
And, but, so when that happened, and I believe the Planning Commission did not put a whole lot of priority on it from that point on, did they?
I really don't remember, to be honest with you. I just.
They did because it never came back to the Select Board the second time.
So I remember there was a reason that it couldn't, that there was a time thing that had expired and we were starting all over again.
Well, the Select Board was extremely busy with other things.
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Yeah, I mean, they can make some changes. They can't make the, what's considered significant changes. They change the meaning of something, they change the, the result of something. And then they are given the time limit. I think it's 120 days. And then, yeah, then you start over. Norm?
Yeah, I had one more comment. I wanted to ask Andy something. I meant to call him. I never got around to it. But Andy, in your comments, if I heard them correctly, and I had trouble hearing comments from people who were on Zoom last time, because I was at the Select Board meeting and the earphones blocked you guys out. But what I heard was there were two situations that prompted this. And one of them was the shooting range in Paulette. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And the other was some activity that you were concerned with, and I think many would be concerned with. My, I, I share your view certainly with respect to the shooting range. And I am wondering if it would make more sense for us to consider a separate shooting range ordinance, much like we did with the stormwater ordinance, like we're in the process of doing or starting with the airstrip and helicopter ordinance, as opposed to letting something like that, which in my view may become, has the potential for becoming a, a serious threat, get caught up in the difficulties of, and procedures and time that it would take to enact a zoning ordinance. So I wonder if, you know, we can see what they say about a zoning ordinance. We certainly don't have to give them any, any detail. But I would, you know, just ask Andy specifically and others to consider doing a separate shooting range ordinance that could be enacted much quicker. We may have a lot of opposition to it, but I think we, it would proceed much quicker than a zoning ordinance, which is, can be tedious, ponderous, very detailed, and have to go through a different procedure. Thank you. Just, we don't need to talk about it tonight. Just give us some thought.
Andy?
Reason, there's a number of reasons why I think zoning ordinance is necessary. If you look at the situation in Paulette, part of, part of it has to do with the buildings that were constructed that he has utilized. And in here in Rutland Town, right now, we have absolutely no vehicle to stop that. If that gentleman had the plot of land here, if he built three or four buildings, the only thing he would be in violation of would be the, the notice to the, the $15, if I'm right on that bill, 15 or whatever, the, oh, no money for the notice of work. And so if he just proceeded to build those buildings, there'd be nothing we could do about it. With zoning, we would, he would be in violation of a zoning ordinance, and therefore we would have the mechanism to have him remove those buildings if necessary. As far as the noise and the shooting part go, that's just secondary in my mind. It's the, that is something that would have to be dealt with along the way. Another reason I really feel we need it is because we cannot charge impact fees right now. And most towns have impact fees, some ranging from $3,000, some in excess of $10,000, I have seen. Not here in Vermont and in other states. But I think at, at this time, when the town is built out, that really, any number of, of property gets built, it, it does impact the town and add to the, unfairly add to the burden of the existing homeowners. And therefore, the, we should have, with zoning, we can have, we can charge impact fees.
Impact fees on, on like services, municipal services?
You take a building permit out and you pay a fee of a percentage based on the value of, of the home you are constructing, typically in the low percentages. And you tie that all together, and then that would obviously tie in with the other thing, which, which Norman would, I think, go along with on this with the energy thing. Until we have, until we have zoning and until we have building regulations, we really have no enforcement way to have anyone build an energy efficient building. And I certainly see from my experience in Florida, if you want to build homes that can withstand hurricanes, you can't offer incentives. You have to, you have to have a building ordinance that says, this is how you will build the building, because it has to withstand a certain standard. And here in Vermont, we should have standards that say, your building has to be energy efficient to a, to a certain point. So, and, and I'd also like to remind everybody that we had that, we, at the time that Tom Turner was on there, Tom Turner was on, Howard was on the board and Jerry was here. And Tom Turner sent out that questionnaire about zoning. And we had a 77% positive response. So I really think that, that the time could, I'm not going to say it's going to go through easy, but I really think the time has come. So.
And that survey was done the same time it was being discussed between the Planning Commission and the Select Board?
Mm-hmm. So that's, I, I guess I would be to the point now saying, I'd just like to put what I said before into a motion. We can either vote it up or down. Either way, I've said my piece, and we'd send it to the Select Board and see what they want to do.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, but I have at times had mixed views of this. And let me tell you why. As my job as a Lister, and I've been in there for many, many years, people that come in doing title search, whether they're attorneys or wherever they are, getting things out, say, what about zoning? We don't have zoning. I'd say, in time, in time again, they'll say, you don't need it, and you're, you're lucky you don't have it, and we wish we did. I, I've heard that from a number of people that have said. So, so there's two sides to this thing. Some, some believe in it and some don't. And, and that's kind of where I've, I've, I've been hearing this. Of course, you know, they're, they're from here, there, and everywhere, you know, from out of town and so forth. But, you know, and, and as a result of that, I kind of put my mind in some mixed views and not 100% sure where this thing should go. But, but there's, there's more to learn about it for sure. You know, just, I think we need to figure out too, is how, how is zone, how's it going to be administered? And for instance, just this, just within a week, heard complaints of somebody complaining about noise in the neighborhood that was very annoying to them. Now, is zoning going to handle, are they going to be, is zoning going to take care of this? Because right now, the town has nothing that can take care of. We don't have any ordinance or anything.
I guess, yeah, that would depend on the source of the noise.
Well, this is the case, somebody is working on automobiles in his backyard, rubbing up engines, pounding, banging, and then right, right, right in the neighborhood. And the people are really very annoyed. But, you know, like, we have a big police department now, and you, you hear a number of complaints about that. So I'm just, before we get into something, I just want to make sure, is it going to work? Yeah, how's it going to work? That's, that's kind of my feelings about it.
It's going to, excuse me, it's going to take a while. My advice, based on my experiences, would be to start with the bare minimum of 10 pages, maybe. That's what the Select Board was shooting for the last time. And plus, any specific items that, like Andy mentioned, that, you know, you could always add in there.
You can always add and subtract.
The other option, if you're looking to get something done, say, within the next year, I, I would consider an ordinance geared to the specific issues that you, you mentioned. And because most ordinances can be crafted in such a way that, in some cases, have more clout than a zoning ordinance would. And so I think we really should look at both to see which is going to fit us the best.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to.
Barbara Sherman has hand up.
Hi, Sherman. Yeah, Sherman?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, just wanted to say a few things. I certainly agreed with Andy that I, that I always think we need an ordinance, because I hear the things that would be better if we had one. But on the other hand, what Howard said was, there are also things that are better now because we don't have one. And as a board, we haven't really looked at the pros and cons of an ordinance. I mean, my gut reaction is we need one. But on the other hand, I can't say that I've looked at the, at the alternative and the advantages of the alternative, which is not having an ordinance, I mean, not having a zoning, not having zoning. And I'm talking about zoning. I'm sorry if I said ordinance. But not having zoning versus having it. I, I, I just don't, don't think we've looked at it fully, even though we have some, some feelings. And, and I tend to agree with them, but I couldn't, I could not argue with someone who has strong reasons and examples of, of the advantages of not having zoning. And my other, and my question with that is that, is there anything that, that can be done in zoning that can't be done in an ordinance? And I ask that by sort of, sort of agreeing that maybe, maybe an approach would be to start with an ordinance or a number of ordinances. And if it turns out that we want zoning, it, it should be possible to pull those ordinances together in the form of a zone, I mean, a zoning law. So that's it.
Barbara?
Good question. Andy?
I'd just like to say that what, what I'm proposing here isn't for us to have zoning. What I'm really proposing is that we're asking the Select Board if they want us to follow along and examine zoning. And so therefore, if the Select Board, if we just send this request to the Select Board and they send it back to us and say no, that's the end of it to me. I mean, then we just drop it. I mean, they're, they're saying, they will be saying to us, obviously, no, we're not interested. And if they're not interested, there's no sense in us sitting down and, and spending a lot of time going through a document that, that they're not in favor of.
So what do we do if they say yes?
Then we start work.
Do we examine the pros and cons of it, or do we start developing one?
I, I would say we debate it. Then, you know, it'll be fun.
And I'm sure there'll be some direction from the Select Board. If we got that far.
I'm sorry.
Norman and Jim?
Thank you. Um, you know, I don't recall ever seeing what that proposed ordinance was. And I kind of share Sherman's approach, and would suggest that we don't vote on this, Andy's motion this week, this time, that we table it till next meeting. And in the interim, if it can be found, send out a copy of the ordinance that went to the Select Board and came back to the Planning Commission, and let us take a look at it. So we have some idea of what we're getting into. Not line by line, but in terms of procedure. I would also say that we would, perhaps could be furnished with copies of the relevant portions of Title 24 that deal with passing of a zoning ordinance and how it's promulgated. So we know so we know what we're getting ourselves into and if we want to get into it. So I think Sherman's cautious approach is something I, I support.
Jim?
I lost my turn.
It would be a. Oh, I'm sorry. I went, I went one too long.
Well.
It's called a senior moment.
None of us know anything about that.
I just think that we're just asking the Select Board if they want us to take a look at it. And that is the gist of my motion, is that, that we, we don't need to examine the document, because we're just asking them if they want us to proceed. And so I, I think we should vote on that motion. If I can get a second.
If you can get. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Is there a second?
Yes, Mary Beth.
Okay, great.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to ask the Select Board whether it wants us, the Planning Commission, to review and perhaps update and the, the previous zoning information and, and bylaws that were put into place, and also look at alternatives, if they want us to look at alternatives to that. Is that my phrasing that?
Certainly, that's fine.
Okay. So all those in.
Barbara?
Yeah. Go ahead.
The words put into, the words put into place, I think, are inappropriate, because they weren't put into a place that were proposed, as opposed to put into place.
Okay, so we'll change that to proposed. Any other discussion? Ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor of taking this to the Select Board, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
So that was Norm and Sherman and, and Dana, what was your vote? You're locked.
Mine was in the affirmative.
Okay.
I put my thumbs up.
Okay.
Said aye in the affirmative.
The motion passes, so I'll take it to them next Tuesday night. Good. Okay. So move down to old business. The update on McKinley Avenue subdivision, that is, Dave Clary was here at our meeting three weeks ago, describing that they wanted to move some boundary lines. And they're in the process of getting a survey, which we haven't seen yet. We've also contacted the town attorney for Rutland Town and asked him whether he thinks. uh, and asked him, um, whether he thinks this is a boundary line adjustment, since there are so many lines and so many properties being adjusted, or whether it falls under, um, what's in our, um, subdivision regulations as a re-subdivision. So he apparently is on vacation, so we haven't heard back from him. So we'll have to wait on, on that. Uh, in the meantime, it doesn't appear as though the, the folks up in McKinley Avenue are in a great hurry anyway. So that's that. Um, next on the agenda is the Stormwater Ordinance web map, and the revisions that have been made to that. So, um, Andre Cerviso and his company Watershed Consulting have made changes to their original, uh, web map. Um, they have done a, uh, a user guide for that, and also they've responded to, I believe, all of the questions and comments we had as a group about that map. So the, the question is, are we ready to, um, ready to accept everything? We have, we have paid for their work, um, since they've done a lot, uh, for us, and it's stretched out over some time. But the question is, you know, are, are we ready to post this, put this up, and publicize that we do have a map to help people figure out where they are, uh, vis a vis that, that ordinance? Whether they're affected by it or not, and which portions of the ordinance are they affected by? Now Dana, I think you wanted to spend some time looking at the latest things that they did for us, the, the user guide and the feedback. Have you had a chance to do that? Are you still on the line? Okay, I think we and I think he's the only person that-
He is, but it says his bandwidth is low, so it's, it's not, he has no connection right now.
Barbara, were you addressing me?
Yes.
Didn't hear your question.
We're, we're on the Stormwater, um, the Stormwater map, online map.
Yep.
So do you have any, uh, anything, any contributions, any questions about where we're at, or what we should be doing at this point? Because we have a revised map.
I went through the, um, yep, I went through the, most of the edits uh, that were provided, and then I went to the map itself and actually tried many of those links, and found it to be a vast improvement over what we had before.
Okay.
So, um, from, from my perspective, it was, uh, a huge improvement. There might be still a few things that, you know, are less than optimal, but I'm not sure, uh, how that should be taken into consideration or what should be done with it. And that's, that would take a little bit more time than we have, I think, this evening. Uh, but, uh, I was very pleased with what they, um, had, uh, included, because many of the major, uh, concerns that Norman and I had identified were corrected. So I found it to be much more user-friendly. I don't know if anybody else has had that experience, but anyway.
If, if that's the case, my suggestion is we go ahead and post it. They've been extremely cooperative and responsive. If there's still, Dana, maybe we can get together and go over the glitches that you found, come up with a, something in a few months and send, send it back up. And my guess is they'd be pleased to change it.
And if that, if that's still an option, I would, I would wholeheartedly support just posting it, because it is a much more, uh, user-friendly, uh, tool than it, than it was previously, so.
Yeah, it might be good to get, um, some townspeople to use it as well and get some feedback there.
And that could be, that could be beneficial to the planning commission, so, yeah. Happily support that.
Yeah, I'm sure we- Yes, please.
I, I'll make a motion to post the, um, Stormwater Ordinance, um, tool and map for use by town residents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Beth, thank you. Any other discussion on this? I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can go back to them, whether, you know, we might have to pay a little more extra the next time around, uh, but maybe not, maybe they'll keep making changes.
It's a working map, and so once they get the tool and play with it, I'm sure, you know, things will pop up.
Things will pop up.
But right for now, it's, it seems to be a good working map.
You've got things on the ground that'll change too, like construction projects or ditching or whatever the-
Boundary line adjustments.
So in other words, I'm born to know things we don't have any control over.
Right, right, right.
Is this on one of our GIS maps that has property lines on it, or how do they, I don't recall?
They-
It must be on a state.
They used a, yeah.
The parcels are down.
The parcels are on it. So as the parcels get updated, they'll automatically get updated on this map.
Didn't we note them all in the grand list? Don't they all have a note on them now?
The, the grand list, uh, yeah, in the grand list, we identified, there's a few fields in the grand list that identifies.
I think that's, I think that's how we did it, is we gave them that list, eventually did so, but yes, parcel are, are, are identified.
Yeah, well, let's keep track of that, because, because when you, when you place the cursor over a parcel, you get some boxes, dialogue boxes, and make sure those get updated, or are updated as well as, as the map itself, so, yeah, all things to kind of keep an eye on. So-
So that's not tied into the, our grand list, so to speak, it's something that they took information from our grand list and put it into this file.
So that's one of the questions, is how does that get updated?
Yeah. Okay, so there's a motion and a second.
If I remember correctly, Barbara and everyone else, uh, they did uh, uh, link some of the, uh, key data in different locations, and now they're all on one official attribute of the, of the map. So if you want to call a question.
Okay. So, all those in favor of using the map, posting it and publicizing it, please say aye.
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 And an aye from Norm?
Yes.
And Sherman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. Just not seeing, it's not seeing all of you during the voting. So that passes, any nays? I think that was unanimous. Okay. So we'll be working on that bill. Let me know what you need, if you need anything from, from them to be able to do that. And we'll get some publicity out too, I'll work with you on that one. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the, we've been tossing around for a couple of months now, um, whether we should go to the select board and suggest a con, a conservation commission for the town. So Mary Beth has been working on this, have been helping her out a little bit, um, doing some research. And we also came up with a proposed mission statement. Did everybody get copies of that?
Yep.
Yes.
I left mine on my desk.
Oh.
You need one, Jim?
So so first of all, um, I'll let Mary Beth start. We, we contacted probably about eight or seven or eight towns, something like that.
Yeah.
Just to get an idea of, of how conservation commissions are used elsewhere, because there's a lot of latitude for what they can do. And so, um, here's what we found. Take it, take it away, Mary Beth.
Uh, so one of the things that got us started on looking at conservation commissions is the, the work you've been doing with recreation, so working on the Pocket Park and how that's gonna look, and, um, we also have, we looked at, um, a couple of meetings ago, town-owned land, um, and talked about how, um, we could be doing other projects. So right now, obviously, the select board and, um, the, um, road foreman and the, um, uh, recreation director of the town is involved with the parks. And, um, we talked about, you know, we're forming a relationship with starting the Pocket Park, and it'd be nice to expand that and see, so we wanted to see what other towns were doing, um, who had already formed conservation commissions, um, and what their role is in the town with recreation and trails and, um, just looking at natural resources in the town. Um, so we reached out to a couple of towns throughout the state and in Rutland County. Um, so I guess I'll start with, um, Wallingford that I started with. Um, I talked to a lady who's been on their conservation commission for, um, ten or twenty years. Um, I think they started it in nineteen ninety-two, and they helped manage, um, Elfin Lake. And there's a, um, piece of land attached to that, they have recreation fields, and then also more of a natural area. It's about forty acres where they've built trails there. And one of their main functions in town is to help write grants. Um, and through that, they've been able to get youth conservation corps to come in and build and maintain trails. Um, they've worked, um, they've built a canoe and kayak launch on the Otter Creek, which is something that's as part of our pocket plant, our Pocket Park plans. Um, they've created kiosks with maps showing where the trails are and information about the trails, which is another thing we've been talking about, both historical and natural. Um, and at Northwood Park, that's another area that some of that work has been done, but, um, uh, so the value in talking with, um, the co-chair of the Wallingford Group is, um, she thinks it's valuable to have a town body that is focused on recreation, because, you know, the select board has so many other things to, um, focus on. And they also have a recreation committee, um, focused more on the ball fields, and they partner on different projects, because they, um, overlap. But like she was saying, everything that they do gets approved by the select board, but they put in the time and effort finding the grants and, um, getting funding to focus on, um, on projects. And there are similar, you know, towns in, um, farther away from Rutland Town that, um, have used the group to, um, purchase and conserve new land, build trails, manage and maintain trails. Um, but it's a pretty central role of conservation commissions. Uh, a lot of them also do nature walks, um, educational events for, um, kids and the public. And, um, one theme that I found with talking with different people, um, who are on conservation commissions and have worked with them, is, um, um, just the, the role that it can have, that having a conservation commission can have with involving schools and the public and, um, getting people to come into town, um, to recreate, you know, publicizing that the trails are available, and then that can bring more business to town, to, um, businesses throughout the town. Um, so that, those are kind of some themes from talking with a few different towns. Um, would you like to share?
Yeah, I've got a couple more, um, Rutland area towns. Um, Shrewsbury has had a conservation commission for quite some time. Uh, Greenup is one of their, they call their Constance. Um, and it, they have gone through generations of what they called Shrewsberries, E-R-R-I-E-S. Um, they start with a breakfast, uh, they select a cleanup road, and they have raffles for prizes, and then they head out. Um, they've also done quite a bit on invasive plants, um, with workshops with the Vermont Forest Parks and Rec. And, uh, they even have an invasive Zar Arena in Shrewsbury, and that program's been going eight years just by itself. Uh, they've replaced sugar maple trees as needed around the town meeting house and the town green. They have an active, uh, walks and talks program to, um, help residents know about, you know, various natural resources in towns. And I guess they've been very popular. Uh, recent topics have been deer yards in the winter, vernal pools, tree identification, one and two, stargazing with astronomers, beavers, hiking our town forests, mushroom ID, identifying and foraging, uh, visiting sugaring operations, um, a yearly May naturalist walk, finding moose tracks and sharing moose stories among the Shrewsberries, and, uh, how to use game cameras, and, um, also stuff on bears and carbon sequestration, which is keeping, limiting forests from being cut and keeping carbon in the trees. Um, they've also more recently worked closely with the select board and the planning commission to enhance the conservation of natural resources. Uh, a new project is creating a collection of data with citizen scientists on wildlife road crossings in town. And they've done, um, they just recently did, with the help of Fish and Wildlife, Vermont Fish and Wildlife, a, a pretty sizable land conservation, uh, purchase. And, uh, they, they were able to come up with a lot of local funding to match, the, the actual purchase price of that. Over in Timoth, they've been around for a while too. Um, they've done a lot to conserve land in that town, um, as well as historical sites and scenic views. Um, it has helped the town identify and assess resources. It offers the town and landowners guidance on the conservation of those resources, and it educates residents, in this case, uh, my word, Timothonians, why their resources are so important. And they organize hikes and, and work parties, domain trails and other resources. And then, uh, we have Middletown Springs, which has been in operation since two thousand, and it's been working with its, its residents, the Middletown Springers, maybe, um, to learn about and sustain natural resources. Uh, they have stewardship activities and of the town forest and the Sullivan Educational Woods, a kiosk and hiking trails and, um, and educational programs there. Uh, they are also involved with controlling invasive species, and they have a priority of monitoring and assessing the town's rivers, wildlife, wetlands, and upland natural communities, as well as Green Day efforts. They have annual workdays, um, and these, these are projects they have with partners. Uh, they have annual workdays with, um, a, a number of groups, Nature Conservancy and Conservation Districts and the Historical Society. And they support environmental education efforts at the Middletown Springs Elementary School, and they support efforts to identify, map, and conserve wildlife travel corridors, wetlands, natural communities, and important wildlife habitat. So I guess, in summary, uh, these towns have pretty, you know, well-developed and well-established conservation commissions. Uh, there are other towns in the region that, that are like more in our position, that haven't quite pulled the trigger and are thinking about it, may have done some of these activities, you know, maybe Greenup Day and stuff like that. Um, but these are the most developed and probably run the full gamut, almost the full gamut of, of what you can do with a conservation commission. So we took that information.
Well, so getting into the mission statement and the, our initial goals, a couple of the people that we talked to recommended having, um, you know, not a whole range of, you know, she listed- You know, not a whole range of, you know, she listed a lot of the different options, but to leave things kind of simple, have a simple mission statement. Um, and a few goals to start with, um, and then you could always build from there, but just to. Establish the group focus on conservation, natural resources. Um, but don't start with a full agenda to begin with, um, so. We worked on, you know, just having a couple of sentence or one sentence, mission statement, um. So I'll read you what we were thinking and then we could always um, adjust it. Um, if you guys have other ideas, um, so the mission statement. The mission of the Rutland Town Conservation Commission is to assist the town with identifying, assessing and protecting. Natural and cultural resources, educating the public on why these resources are important. And engaging residents and students in town projects and programs to sustain the resources of the town. So you'd mentioned, um, natural resources is, is a part of it, but I was interested to find. Some other conservation commissions, um, you know, scenic views, historical resources, cultural resources can all be. Part of that, um, like we saw in the Pocket Park, one of the big draws is. Uh, historical significance of the park and educating people. Um, so we thought it was important to put, to have that in the mission statement with the natural resources. Um, so I guess to start there, um. Should we have, do you guys want to comment on the mission statement, um?
I have, I have a comment.
Your thoughts? Sure.
I have. Comment, yeah, and, and these, I mean, I like the mission statement, they're just, I have some things that I think maybe should be changed a little in it.
Okay.
We, I would add, well, I would just say the Rutland Town Conservation Commission's mission. Is to assist the town with identifying and I would add utilizing in there.
Hmm.
Something that.
Yes.
And, and at the end, and, and protecting the town's natural resources, not just natural resources.
Okay.
That's otherwise, I mean, I'm sure there's more that could be added, but otherwise I think it's, I, I agree with it, I like it.
I like that adding utilizing, I like both of those things.
You would keep in assessing, Sherman?
Oh, yes, I'd keep that in, and I would, and at the end I would say, uh, and to engage, not end engaging, and to engage. To be concerned with the first part of the. Statement.
So the reason there's brackets on part of it is, um, we weren't sure if it was redundant.
Right.
Or, um, so that was one thing, really, well, are we saying? But we thought, I don't know, I think it would be good to have that in there. Educating with, you know, because engaging residents and students, I think is a little bit different from. Educating the public.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't uh, disagreeing with that at all.
Okay.
Just the way it stated, it's not end engaging, but and to engage.
Yeah, yeah. Hmm. Alright. Okay, um, and then we had a couple of goals that. Um, we thought would encompass most of what we're thinking the group would do, um, at least initially. Um. So proposed initial and startup goals, one, help the town apply for and manage grants to improve town-owned land. And promote the public enjoyment of resources. For example, grants can be used to build and maintain trails, improve scenic overlooks. And develop educational resources like kiosks or plaques to share historical and ecological information. Um, two, coordinate programs and events related to stewardship and education, including Green Up Day. Nature walks and monitoring invasive species. Three, contribute to town planning efforts and report regularly to the select board. Um, so it's kind of a um, basic set of um, responsibilities, but. Um, I think it. Captures what we were thinking we would be doing initially and part of it is having the new. You know, hopefully things move forward, like we're um, hoping with the Pocket Park. Um, but then even having established it. You know, there are different interpretive things we could do there, we could do events, trying to get people aware that it's even there and they can come visit. Um, you know, there's invasives all along the river where we want to have the, the trail, so work can be done there. Um, the same with um, Northwood Park, you know, there are some plaques there. Um, already with information, but more could be done and um, we could help have publicize. The park a little more to get people out on the trail loops and, um.
Yeah.
Just some ideas on, um. Getting the public more to, like you were saying, utilize the resources that we have and just being aware of what's out there. Um.
Okay, so I guess the, the question for the group is, um, not only do you like the mission statement and the goals. It is uh, whether we should move, continue moving this proposal forward and take it to um. The select board. Um, there's an iPad request up there. From Andy, but.
Oh, oh, that's me, I think.
Oh, I think just hit decline whoever.
Now do it.
I don't have anything up, I don't think.
I wonder where that came from on my screen. Just shut it off, so.
Howard, do you?
There we go.
Did you have some comments?
I, I just got to mention that, um. How, how we would fit this thing with right now, the, the Recreation Department, for instance, is, is doing all the. Maintaining all the ball fields, the Northwood Park and, and things like that, the highway department's doing green updates. There's a lot of things that we have to intermingle in with because it's, it's good that. A lot, a lot of stuff in our town is already happening, there's more that can be done, ob- obviously, somehow. Um, I was, I think that the. It would be a workable solution with, like the direct department, they, they should, they shouldn't have any heartburn with it, I wouldn't think, but, I mean. They're in charge of certain things and. We'd have to work together with them, I guess.
Well, one thing, so I was sharing, we, it was not on the agenda tonight, but um, just a few days ago. Um, uh, six million dollars in grants was announced from the state for recreation projects. Um, so, and that's, you know, there's kind of a limited timeline, I don't know if any of these projects are going to be, you know. But that's a yearly thing, there happens to be a lot more money available this year because of COVID, um. But that's something that we could help the, the town recreation staff, um. You know, just put in the time to help write the grant and when you have public input. That, um, one thing I've heard from other towns is that, um, the more, if you have several people involved. And working on a project, it could be a little more likely that you would get funding for it, um. But definitely be working with the town employees and um, still with the planning commission, but. Um, and the select board, but just having a group with that focus, just because we have, like we saw in our agenda tonight, so many other things. But the planning commission is doing, um, including the, the park and stormwater and. Um, so possibly zonings, energy, but.
Norm.
Yeah, um, not quite clear what you want tonight. It's tonight to take it to the select board and see if they want us to proceed, is that what?
Yes, and, and unless you want to put the brakes on it and, and you need more information or.
I, I, I don't think so, I just want to, uh, and maybe Mary Beth was hitting at this. When you go to the select board, please make it clear that this is a separate entity. Um, and is intended to be a separate entity and because there may be this temptation to. Say, okay, you gave it legs, you teach it how to walk, um, and. You know, I think we're going to be pretty much overloaded without it and it should be it. And there is some question in my mind whether they can, um. Uh. Add it to our load, uh, because of the way the statute is written and compensation. Uh, it prohibits compensation to members of the uh, Conservation Commission. If they gave it back to us, we're compensated, uh, maybe they can say, oh, your sitting is a separate body, but. I think it would be best to make it clear that, um, it's not something we want to take on, it's, it's a separate. Separate commission.
I- is that where we are?
What do you mean, Sherman?
I mean, is, I, I was under the impression we were proposing that the. Planning Commission take on some of this to start out with.
No, I was proposing, well, or my understanding was that it would be a totally separate group. You know, people that are not on the planning commission and the conservation commission, that it wouldn't be something that's added, it would actually be. Taking away some of the things that we've been working on, just related to parks. Recreation, natural resources, so be removing something from the, the planning commission. Have separate meetings, probably less often, but. Focused on conservation and natural resources, but um, not as part of the planning commission or in that meeting. Um.
But they could play an advisory role to the planning mission.
Good, good, it was just my mis- my misunderstanding, that's good, I, I agree with that.
But it wouldn't be something like the Stormwater Commission where it's something that is, would be part of our normal meeting, it's. Right, separate from that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Norm.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still not clear, um. I agree it should go to the select board and they should tell us whether it's something they're interested in, assuming they approve it. Is my assumption correct, it comes back to us, we draw the regulation, the regulations, uh. And then if approved by the select board, uh, then there'll be a. Separate commission and it will take from there, but right now, we would still be charged with. Laying the regulatory language and developing it further than what we have here in the mission statement.
Probably, but it, that could stay with the select board and there's another step. That it goes to a townwide, townwide vote.
It has to?
Yes.
So in talking with, I don't know if it's, um, exactly, oh, sure.
Barbara, when does it go to the townwide vote, after the select? Once all the.
The select board would put it on the ballot, uh, that would be their purview.
Before it came back, before it came back to us to fill in the blanks.
Probably, I don't know all of the, the sequence of the steps there, but it does, you do need town approval if you're not a charter municipality, which we are not. So, um, you know, that could be the next town meeting or could, you know, could conceivably be a special election, but that would. Not very likely is the case.
So I, the way that I understand it, we would, you know, we bring into the select board, well, first we vote. Should we bring into the select board or not, are we in favor of it in general as a planning commission? Then the select board approves it or doesn't approve, putting it on the ballot in March. And then between that point and in March, we would, um. Bring it, or a few people, probably me, would bring it to the public, the town residents. Maybe have a, an informational meeting or something just to get awareness about it before the vote. But we have until March to do that and to see what interest there is in, um. People being on the Conservation Commission, um, what I not clear about, so the Wallingford. Um, co-chair said that when they started their conservation commission, they needed. Uh, a petition of five percent of the voters to.
They have, they have special rules down there.
Okay, okay, so I guess that doesn't imply, that's one thing we don't need to worry about, but.
I don't think so.
Public awareness that people would be able to vote, at least know what it is and vote either way.
I'll double check then, I think the select board can put a ballot issue on, but I'll double check that.
Okay.
Whether there needs to be a petition.
But I, one thing that I, that ha- Norm brought up that I'm not sure about, I don't think we need a special ordinance or bylaws. Or work to create the Conservation Commission. Um, other than just this initial goals and, so I don't think there's more work that the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Do when they send it, if they approve it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so is there any consensus tonight on this?
Let's send it to.
I'll make a. Well, one.
I think just reading through the, the notes of the select board or the minutes of the select board, I think they wanted us. Or they asked if we had a vote on whether we, um, were in favor of it.
Right, and they want a presentation in July. Okay, so, um.
Well, let's not. Uh, Barbara, I'll make a motion to recommend the establishment of a, uh, Conservation Commission. Uh, to be.
Sounds like he's humming.
Dana, you are definitely breaking up.
The select board.
Okay, can you, can you repeat that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better.
That's better, okay. Uh, I was trying to stay put, but apparently the signal moved. Um, to, uh, recommend. To the pla- uh, to the select board, the creation of a Conservation Commission.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor taking it to the select board next week, next Tuesday, say aye.
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 Opposed? One person opposed, okay. Okay. Alright, you ready?
Yes.
If you're open to a couple of comments, I could.
Oh, sure.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
I think we're setting up the, or potentially. Uh, for a lot of work for somebody. And I believe, without having researched, uh, what, any of this. That. At least temporarily, this could be worked by title and. And uh, to let folks know that we certainly do, uh, do not, uh. Lose track of this. Concept, could put a statement in our town plan. About that.
That, that we would encourage the creation of one, is that what you? That, that we would encourage the creation of one? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
That way, if the, if the subject comes up, um, we've got something to hang our hat on as to continuing with, um, the process.
Okay.
I've been through similar things before in my term on, even on the select board here in Rutland Town and also for 12 years over in Royalton. And I can tell you that when you have a lot of vagaries, it's a, you're a sitting duck for being overwhelmed with stuff.
And by vagaries, you mean, you also mean like options of what it can do?
What's that?
Do you, do you mean like the options, the, the many options, the many directions it could go?
Yeah. And I don't think any one of us here want to get wrapped around that axle. I know I don't. So that's why I voted no.
Okay, okay. Norm?
Uh, my question to Jim is, or to you, Barbara, actually. If it makes sense to put it into the town plan, um, how soon can we do it? And what would the process be to do it?
Well, let's see, we passed the plan in, the last time we adopted the plan was 2019, I believe. So it's on an eight-year cycle, so it wouldn't have to be done. The town plan doesn't have to be, you know, opened up and, and readopted until 2025. But you can, you can do that process at any point. You don't have to wait for that eight-year cycle. And, you know, it's the same thing, goes through the planning commission, there's public hearings, there's time limits and all that. Then it goes to the select board for a similar process. Whether you're readopting in the eight-year cycle or opening it up mid, mid-cycle.
But by putting it in the town plan, you don't have to wait for a, a public vote.
Correct. That's what we found. We went to the informational session, virtual from the state, and they said there's the two different avenues and one is to do, um, to get select board approval and then be on the ballot. And then the other one is to put it in the town plan and that would be enough.
You can ask for an advisory vote anytime.
Hmm.
Non-binding. If you're looking to find out which way the wind's blowing. Um, that can be done.
But at that time, really, well, should we put it in the town plan or should we? And because we had just completed the town plan, we thought it would be a better route to go through, uh, the ballot versus reopening the town plan that we just.
There's a comment I wanted to make that would apply here that, uh, refers to something Jerry, um, or Andy said about, uh, 70% of the people wanting zoning. Well, at that point in time when that question was asked, we didn't have a thing to present to the voters. Nothing on paper. But the minute it came out on paper, and there were some explanations of, of what could be in that, uh, final document, that percentage went down. So that's something to keep in mind, too.
Okay. So we've got some direction for this. And we won't see it on the agenda probably. Well, maybe we'll. We won't be tabling it every time. Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is, um, the helipad and the airstrip ordinance. So I don't know, I mean, Andy came, um, to the last meeting with some suggestions um, that you had come across. So right now, we're kind of in the process of collecting those. If you're, you're talking to folks that have done this ordinance or to pilots, um, or other people that know, have some knowledge of this. Um, that's where we're at right now. And so I don't know if, Dana, did, did you have any to bring to the table tonight? You're, you're muted.
How's that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I talked with one person, got some good feedback. I've got some notes down. He, uh, recommended that I talk to somebody else, put me in touch, gave me their contact information. I'll be exploring that in the next week or so. Um, and then I'll have some things that I can share with you, Barbara, uh, that you could perhaps incorporate as questions or as things to consider, uh, particularly as it relates to Article Four or section, whatever it was that we were, uh, looking at.
Yeah.
So, um. Yep.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so we're still, uh, fact-finding and gathering information.
Right. So I will have more information, um, as I reach out to the, uh, other contacts that he gave me. Um, the, if I can remember, I don't have my, uh, paperwork in front of me at home. But, um, if I remember correctly, uh, he had a strategic, um, couple of points for us to include in terms of helping to regulate noise reduction and, um, and timing of, um, of landings to help minimize impact. So, uh, I do have some language for that, but I can give that to you when I give you the rest of the information.
Okay.
Yeah, it was good.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for joining us from wherever you are.
I'm in upstate New York at the moment.
Anything else on this one? We'll just continue to plug away?
I think that makes sense, Barbara.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, uh, keep moving down through the agenda here. We're down to announcements and news. Just a reminder that the second um, ARPA listening tour meeting is this Tuesday night, it's just before the select board meeting. And that's to, um, gather input and ideas on how to spend the ARPA money that's coming to Rutland Town. So there's been one meeting so far and there's a list of ideas. Um, um, but the select board and Mary Ashcroft are looking for more. Um, also in this announcement section, uh, the, the, the Velco, what do they call it? The, well, their, their work there, the North Rutland, they called it. The work there at the substation that has been compiled in, in the Section 248 application. So that's been filed full bore. So that's in. Yes, if anyone wants to see it, um, this is what a Section 248 application looks like. Yeah. And, um, Bill was notified and another topic, Bill was notified this week that the apartment, remember the, uh, five-building apartment complex to go in, in, um, off Route 7 South, Middle Road, um, that has fallen through. Has fallen through.
Oh, my.
Um, they wanted to come with a smaller project, the developer.
Ultimately, the property owner declined the offer of the purchasing price. What it came down to.
Oh, really? I couldn't hear that.
The, the seller declined the offer made by the, by the developer. So it's back on the market for 2.3 million.
Who's the seller? Who's the seller?
I'm not sure. Oh.
Barnards?
No, no, no. Um. Mondellas are involved in it. Cheryl Mondella was a daughter of the, of the Dyer family. And there's a number of people that are into this, but it's, uh, Cheryl and Joel Mondella are the ones that are kind of handling and managing this thing now. So it's a dead issue.
Yep.
I think there was some discussion on maybe reducing the size of it. And that may have had some impact on what the, uh, what the developer was willing to pay. Um, and, you know, the, the give and take there with the prices of the land. Um, maybe some environmental considerations there that, that brought them to that point. Maybe some wetlands, so that they downsized it, you know, a little bit. So.
I don't know what else we're going to put there, but we shall see.
Yeah. So that's that news. And then, um, there has been an engineering firm for the Pocket Park, switching gears once again. An engineering firm has been selected to do the, the surveying there. And, um, there will be a complete survey of all, not just the property lines, but the structures and infrastructure there, um, the natural features, the contours of the land. So that is, they thought they might start this week, but it's, it's a, it's an outfit from Bennetton called MSK. And, uh, this is their proposal, their bid proposal that was accepted. So that should be, it should be done. If they didn't start this week, it should be done um, in the next couple of weeks, certainly by the end of September. We'll have the survey done. And, and at that point, the town can sit down with a GMP and kind of work out an arrangement since both entities own that parcel. So that's proceeding a bit. Anything else that anyone else wants to bring up tonight? I'm still getting adjusted to the two screens here. Have to check both. So we'll move on to the minutes from June 24th. Hey Dana, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, Andy?
I have some corrections.
Hey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, on page three, uh, paragraph one. Um. Okay, it says, um, uh, Mr. Cohen commented that holding off on forming a committee uh, since there may be some state funding coming to the regional planning commissions, then it says from the state. I think that should be deleted. If I said it, I'm embarrassed. Um, and I know Bill tries to take these verbatim, but that makes no sense at all. Um, and in paragraph four, uh, end, end of the first line, they can accept, and I think it should be expect. I think it's just a typo.
Yeah.
And those are the only two I found.
Okay, um. There's something I question, um, on page two at the very bottom, old business number one. Talking about the helipad airstrip ordinance. A, a person who could help provide input to the group on this has not been found yet. Not sure where that came from.
You talked about trying to find an expert to come talk to the group, but you couldn't identify one yet. You wanted one, but, but you couldn't identify one.
Okay. And I think that was in the context of the airport manager, um, not being able to do it.
You wanted to find by pilot and airport manager, somebody, and nobody could come to. It was a weird conversation, hard to phrase, so I was.
The fellow I reached out for has had some family difficulties and has not gotten back to me. I'll try again.
Wasn't that V-trains did not want the airport manager doing this?
Yeah, it was a bit of a conflict of interest. Yeah. Making suggestions to us, you know. Since, yeah, the airport is run by AOT. So, okay, we can, we can leave that lying in. Uh, anything else?
Barbara, I have a question. It was not the meeting, but in reading, uh, the same paragraph Norman referenced number four on page three, under, um, Old Business Energy Committee update. Um, after the first line, that typo that Norman mentioned, state funds will be available and other resources of information will be available to assist Rutland County and towns that have energy committees will be avail, will be able to participate. Something's missing. Or something needs to be rephrased because I don't understand that sentence.
You're right.
Yes. Um, will be available to assist Rutland County and towns that have energy committees. Uh, you can pretty much put a period right there.
Yep, okay.
I agree.
I didn't know. I, I wasn't there, so I couldn't comment, but it just didn't make sense. I read it three times. That's all. I don't have anything else.
So we're going to strike, will be able to participate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Now I've forgotten who made the motion to accept the minutes?
I think I did.
I did.
You did. I second it.
I'll, I'll revise my motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I have to, Barbara.
Yep. Okay, anything else from anyone? You want to wish us luck on Tuesday night?
Absolutely.
Luck on Tuesday.
What would you start, what would you start with? The zoning or the Conservation Commission?
I'd do the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, everybody.
When's your next meeting? When's your next meeting?
The next meeting should be August 5th. Um. I may have a conflict on the 20th. I do have a conflict on the 26th. So, um, next meeting, we can talk about what we want to do for a meeting at the end of August.
Okay.
I'm going to give that some thought. Okay, is, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I see a move.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.